Welcome to the April 11th, 2023, 6:30 PM City Council Meeting. We are glad to have you all here and we do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a, I gotta do that better. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you, and would the Boy Scouts please come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? All y'all can make it on up here. Nobody has to give a speech. Come on up. If the leader of the Boy Scouts could kind of tell us, because I didn't know, the, the number, the, the pack or whatever it is we are here, the, we are the?
We're troop 488, and tonight Jason West, our newest Eagle Scout, will lead us in the pledge.
Troop 488, please stand for the pledge. On you.
Scout salute. Please show me the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the noble and righteous standers. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you guys very much, appreciate it. As I reflect, and you told me they're troop 488, I realize I asked what pack it is because I didn't get out of the Cub Scouts, so. So with that, thank you guys for being here. Yeah, I hope that you enjoy your time here and, and again, hopefully you'll be part of this down the road. So again, thank you for being here, guys, and see you soon, or see you right down there.
Mayor, before we get to the minutes in your meeting, staff would like to make a, a few agenda item adjustments for your consideration.
Absolutely.
First off, 9E was, has been withdrawn from the applicant, so there's not, no vote required. But if anybody is here for Agenda Item 9E, which is a CUP 9-2022, that item will not be heard tonight. The second item is CUP 10-2022, which is Lake Fern Academy, and staff recommends that we place 9F right after the minutes.
I would agree, and I thank you for that. Do we need to move that, or can that just happen?
You'll, you'll need to vote on it.
Okay, I need a motion.
Motion made.
And second, all those in favor say yes. Oppose? All right, we're, we'll move that to where? You want to move that to the very top?
Right after the minutes.
Right after the minutes, sounds good. All right, did the pledge to the flag? Clerk, did you do your part yet?
No.
Okay, you can do it now.
Okay. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens should not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issues, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you very much, Clerk. I now need to move on to the approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes of special city council meeting on March 7th, 2023.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. City Manager?
Yes, sir. We are now on Item 9F, which is Conditional Use Permit Number 10-2022, Lake Fern Academy. And the city attorney will read the quasi judicial procedures for this item prior to the introduction of the item.
Thank you, sir.
During this public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on this quasi judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table at the entrance to the chamber. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, of all persons wishing to speak before the city council, signed an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. Staff and for the applicant, have all witnesses that intend to speak sign an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on this quasi judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised? In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit, or received any expert opinions regarding this quasi judicial item, said visitor opinions shall be disclosed.
Counsel, anybody? Nobody, not me, nothing. Okay, sir.
Yes, sir. This is the public hearing on Conditional Use Permit Number 10-2022 to expand an existing private school located at 257 Anguinaldo Drive. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance at their 5 April 2023 meeting and recommended approval as presented, which included the two staff recommendations. The applicant is requesting a CUP to expand their existing private school. A CUP is required for schools in the multi-family high-density residential zoning district per Section 28255. Special exception number 61985 was previously approved on the site to allow the expansion of a private school. Variance number 101992 was approved to allow the private school to provide a minimum of 16 private parking spaces. The subject property contains 2.43 plus or minus acres and continues to be used as private school. The applicant is requesting to expand the school by adding 3,600 square foot to their existing area and provide services for an additional 60 students. The future land designation on this property is high-density residential with the zoning district as multi-family high-density R3. Mr. Parrish is here to provide information to staff, I mean to the council.
Mr. Parrish, help us out, what you got?
So this application, the staff report begins on page 378 of your packet, but I'm just going to direct you straight to the conditions that we are recommending for approval of this conditional use permit. And that's on page 384 of your packet. We believe that the conditional use permit is consistent with the comprehensive plan and with the land development regulations of the code and the zoning conditions of Chapter 28 of the code. And we believe, we recommend approval of this conditional use permit with the following two conditions. That one, relocate the southern extent of the playground fence to meet the minimum 50-foot setback required per Chapter 28 of the code. That is a use condition. And two, landscape yard shall be illustrated on the site plan consistent with the landscaping requirements in Chapter 30, Article 3, Division 10 of the code, unless a variance is approved. I'll just point to you real quick to the plan itself. That's on page 389 of your packet. And you might have to zoom out just a little bit, but you'll see that the conditional use permit will allow the, for an expansion of an existing school. The main entrance, it's off of Aguinaldo Avenue, which is a local road, and so the main entrance goes into a residential subdivision there. This property is behind an existing church. You'll see that they are proposing a new layout for parking and two large buildings to allow for an increased number of students. The concept plan is, one of the reasons why we suggested this condition for the fence to be relocated is because that fence needs to be 50 feet from the property line. So this, that condition is just to correct that. And then the parking condition, or I'm sorry, the landscape yard condition is required. They may need to get a variance or some kind of administrative waiver to it because they are proposing to put angled parking spaces within that landscape yard, which is along their main entrance there. So that'll have to be addressed during the site development process. And then finally, I'm just going to point to you on the next page, 390 of your packet, and there's an aerial, and that'll give you some better orientation as to where the site is located in relation to that one accessway going into the local road in that subdivision there. So with that, we recommend approval of this conditional use permit and the two conditions that I've read, and I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Counsel, any questions? I see none. I do have one. Member Stokoe.
Just question, looking on page 398, are there any issues with the setback between the property and the residential units?
The setback for the buildings and the play area, because the play area has to be 50 feet from the property line. I didn't, we didn't see an issue on that north area there. On the south part, it didn't meet that 50 feet, so that's why we added that condition.
Okay, and they seem to be okay with it, the applicant, with being able to meet those conditions?
They didn't give us any objection to the conditions.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else from counsel? All right, I'd like to call the applicant up if I could. And you know what to say. I was going to tell you, give us a rundown, but I think you're prepared.
Loyes Ward, 2520 Frontier Drive, Titusville. First thing, I'd like to request any members in the audience that support this request to please rise briefly.
To do what now? I'm sorry? Oh, stand, okay. Very good, thanks, sir.
As been stated, the conditions we've reviewed and concur with them, have no objections. And the owners also, on my behalf of myself and the owner. And we have recommendations for approval, as you're aware of, and we'd ask for your support. And I'm here just to answer any other questions you might have, and I'll keep it brief.
Any questions? And you guys have been there, so I don't know that this is even a real factor, but has there been discussion with the residences near the area? Is there any concern from them that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir. School's been there thirty something years.
Yeah, no, it's been there a while. Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other cards?
So, and I'm starting the timer, I'm getting ahead of myself. Art Edwards?
You good?
Okay. My name is Art Edwards. My, my address is 5325 Amway. This is my grandson Jason West. This is my granddaughter Laquinsy West. They both went to Lake Fern Elementary. Lake Fern Montessori Academy, I'm sorry. When my granddaughter was in pre-K, she was attending school in Mems, and they put her on a, a learning plan because she had delayed speech. She, her brain was good, I mean, her thought processes were good. It's just that she couldn't get her words out. She was the tallest thing in the class, and so we decided we didn't want that to happen. So her mother, before her, my daughter, had attended Lake Fern, so we, we knew the, the concept, and so we got enrolled in at Lake Fern. And they had her in the appropriate class areas to suit her learning abilities at that point in time. In other words, she may have been in English with the sixth graders and in math with eighth graders. That's kind of the way to do it, and I, I may not be adequately describing it, and I'm sure that the owners can describe it better. But the point is, Laquinsy did well, did well at, at Lake Fern. When she hit about the fourth or fifth grade, she had pretty much overcome her, her speaking difficulties. And when, when she was 13 years old, she started writing a book because she was inspired by Mr. Price. And at 15, she was a published author. And, and this is a person that the public school system had put on a, a learning plan. She went on to Temple. She was a, a student at Lake Fern, and she ended up getting 1B. And, but she went on to Temple and she, she finished with honors from Temple. She was an 8B student now. She's enrolled at Eastern Florida right now, looking to major in marine biology and transfer to UCF and get her degree from there. But Lake Fern did this for my granddaughter. This is my grandson Jason. He's a Boy Scout. He was also inspired at Lake Fern. They all were in Mr. Price's class towards the end. And Jason is interested in science. The reason I called him up here is because, and I've shared this with some of you all, but Jason was a recent entry in the Beavard County Science Fair, where he won second prize in engineering. And with that second prize, won a lot of things, but the most important is, he's a $1,000 scholarship to 10th Florida Institute of Technology. He was in turn sent to the state, so he, he displayed his, at the state. I'm done.
Can you go another 30 seconds, finish?
Yes, yes. He, he did well at, 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 at state. The, the point I'm trying to make is, in, in my humble but accurate opinion, Titusville needs Lake Fern. They need the capacity because there's a lot of things they can do for youth. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That's very, very important, very helpful. Thank you. Congratulations to you two as well. Published author already, come on, man. All right, next card?
Tyka Price. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak before you tonight. My name is Tyka Price, and I am director and co-owner of Lake Fern Montessori Academy. It's a private school here in Titusville that serves students from two and a half years of age through eighth grade. At Lake Fern, we pride ourselves on having a family atmosphere. We want our students and their families to feel as if they are part of a community and not just a number in a large crowded institution. Students are valued as individuals here, and our teachers strive to make sure that every child receives the tools and individualized instruction he or she needs to be successful. The combination of excellent student-to-teacher ratios, multi-grade level classrooms, specially trained and dedicated staff, and hands-on relevant material, combine to offer our children a quality educational environment that not only prepares them for high school, but ultimately for life. Many of our students have come from other educational environments where they were struggling academically or socially, and several of them have varying exceptionalities, including autism, specific learning disabilities, ADHD, and traumatic brain injury. At Lake Fern, we believe that it is our job to teach the way that our students learn, not their job to learn the way we teach, and we will do everything that we can to help our students to be successful. Sadly, Lake Fern has needed to become a safe haven for students terribly bullied at other schools. Before transferring to our school, one of our students was viciously attacked by several students outside of a local elementary school and stomped on repeatedly, leaving shoe imprints on his chest. Another student at a different Titusville Elementary School was assaulted in one class, and when moved to a different class, she had difficulty learning because students were throwing desks through classroom windows. Thankfully, they are both flourishing since transferring to our school. We currently have 119 students from areas as far north as Scottsmore, as far south as Palm Bay, as far east as Merritt Island, and as far west as Christmas. But we want to be able to help more students. We have a petition of support with 253 signatures from encouraging people in our community and a waiting list of about 200 children that are trying to get into our school. And that list is growing daily. One of the hardest parts of my job is talking to parents desperate to find an alternative to the educational program their children are in and not having enough room in which to be able to accept these students. Often, these parents are in tears, describing to me horrible situations, and I just want to be able to help them, but I can't. I would like to ask you for a conditional use permit because we simply don't have enough room. We want to build a 3,600 square foot building on our current property so we can add additional classrooms and accept approximately 50 new students in the fall. Every child deserves a fighting chance to reach their fullest potential. Please approve our building project so we can help more children do just that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel? I see none. Thank you. Next card, please.
Amy Hammer. Good evening. My name is Amy Hammer. I'm the kindergarten first and second grade teacher at Lake Fern Montessori Academy. However, when I first discovered Lake Fern, it was as a parent. My oldest son is autistic and was in a school where his needs were not being met. My husband and I wanted to find a place where his needs would be accommodated, and he would be loved and taken care of. We found this at Lake Fern Montessori Academy. These amazing teachers listened to us when we told them things that he liked, things that he didn't like. We told them what we had found that would work for us at home in certain situations, and they would use it in the classroom. In addition, they would communicate with us the things that they found that worked, and we could use those tactics at home. They worked tirelessly with him to help him overcome many obstacles that he had been experiencing both educationally and behaviorally. They became a family to us long before I began working there. When I was given the opportunity to work at the school, I immediately jumped at the chance to have the opportunity to pay forward just a little of what was done for my family. All three of my children have since attended Lake Fern and have excelled as they've moved into high school. Two of my sons are Eagle Scouts. I truly believe that the best way to teach a student is to connect with them and find the ways that they learn best, not force them to learn the way we teach. This is what we do at Lake Fern, and by expanding our campus, we will be able to reach more students and help more families as my own was helped. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Last, last card is Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I'm going to address you tonight again as a professional engineer. And I think that Montessori School is something that I wanted to go to, but I didn't have the opportunity. But I'm here because I believe what this meeting should be is an adjournment. Adjournment. I just gave the city clerk a, an email that I sent you April the 3rd, and it's titled "The Government of the City of Titusville: Dysfunctional, Dishonest." And I'm, I've listed numerous violations of laws.
Yes, sir. There's time to talk about that, but this is about the school. You're going to talk about this school?
I'm talking about the decision that you're going to make.
On the school? On the school?
On the school and on all the items of this.
I'm not worried about all the items, I'm worried about the school right now.
You may not be, but I am worried because.
Well, right now, I can get to run the meeting, and we're going to talk about this right now.
Yes, sir.
So please do. You started off well.
All right.
Start the clock.
Okay, so, so, I mean, you could table the, the matter, but, but the thing is, is that, is that I'm requesting adjournment because of the city, what, what this, this group is doing. In other words, you're violating so many numerous laws that I'll point out to you, and it's my job. This is my job as a professional engineer. So when you break the law, and, and, and I'm licensed by the state. I'm licensed by the state to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And the thing is, is the city of Titusville, city manager and city council is not doing that. So I'm, I'm asking you to adjourn the meeting because you.
Okay, you asked that question. Go ahead and stop the clock, although it's still part of the deal. And I'm saying we're not going to adjourn the meeting. I'm going to talk about this right now, and if you're done with that, then you can, you can be done. So go ahead and get started.
Well, I've got, I've got about a minute and a half.
But to talk about this topic, you have a minute and a half?
I am talking about that you should adjourn this meeting, and you don't want to give me a minute and a half?
We're going to, this is going in one way or the other. You're going to be done talking, or you're going to talk about this. Go.
I am talking about this. In other words, I'm saying that this meeting is because of, I, I've, I've listed a number of things and, and that I've sent emails and so forth, and you haven't responded. Pardon?
This. We'll talk about emails later. We're talking about this school.
I'm talking about this decision. This is the decision. I've talked, I've talked to you about some, but I said that Montessori is fantastic.
Well, then that's good. Then you can be done.
Well, I, I don't think you should vote on it today. I think it should be either.
You can say that, and then you can be done. You say that you like this school, but you don't want us to vote on it, and that would be the end of your time.
Well, I don't think so. I don't think so. I've got, I've got, I've, I've got about 40 seconds left to go. And the thing is, is that, so, so I want to enumerate some of these things that you're doing, and, and including the fraud. And I have, I have it numbered on email that I sent you on April the 10th. It has to do with what you're doing, and it says, missing a $70,000 engineering report.
Stop the clock.
ORB.
Stop the clock. Next thing you say is going to be about this, or I'm going to ask you to be done, because you're not talking about this, Stan. You, you can do better than that. I've said to you a million times to just be on topic. You signed up for this topic. Start the clock.
That is, that is this topic. In other words, this topic is, is the people who are voting on this should not be voting at all because of, we've got so much, let's say, I don't like to use the word corruption, but let's call it that. Because of issues of fraud, issues of false reports and so forth, that is that, that the city should be taking care of these things. I've got about one second to go.
Yes.
Goodbye. Can I have extra time?
No, not extra time. But I'm going to say to you now, that I've said to you in the past, I need you to be on the topic. We have a lot of places where you're going to have an opportunity to speak three minutes. If you're going to talk about the same thing over and over, we're not going to go forward. Thank you.
You don't, shouldn't close doors. You should listen to what I have to say. Thank you.
Uh, any other cards? Applicant, anything else you want to add? Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I want, first off, I want to commend the, the staff, the parents, the educators on the job that they do at the academy, continue the hard work, and may God bless you in all your endeavors as you go forward. your endeavors as you go forward, and I would like to make a motion for approval.
Before you do that, I'd like to add to what you said, excuse me, about the outstanding job you do, the place that you fit so very, very well. I know people who have struggled in public school, and that's no hit on public school. I was in public school teaching for 35 years. But that being said, there are times that they need that branch. They need that handout. That doesn't sound right. It's not a handout. But they need that extension. They need that help. And I can tell you that there were people who weren't going to graduate. There were people who were not going to be in school. If you got, I had never heard of you all until, I guess it's probably now 10 years ago, but somebody close to me was all but done, and they weren't done. Now, they're very successful. So, I thank you for that, and I just wanted to reiterate what he had said on that. Member Nelson?
I was going to second.
All right, then we have that. We have the motion from Vice Mayor.
We've got two staff recommendations as well.
Yeah, yeah, with staff recommendations.
Sure, and I just wanted to clarify that you're finding that it is consistent with your comprehensive plan and the conditions of 3476 of the code and the two conditions.
Make the, based on the evidence presented, I move that the approval of the conditional use permit number 102022 at Lake Fern Academy with the staff condition as stated be approved.
Second.
I have the full motion from Vice Mayor, the second from Member Nelson. Roll call, vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion approved. Go forth and educate. Thank you. Good job. Make a difference every day. Wait a minute. Now, we've got to bounce back. City Manager?
Yes, sir. I got a little bit backwards. I got excited about that item, so we're back to minutes now.
Okay.
So, I got it out of order, but we are on 4A right now.
We approved the minutes.
We did that.
We did the minutes. Yes, we did. We did get the minutes.
I just wanted to verify that we did minutes.
Yeah, you were confused, weren't you?
And City Manager, just for the record, to keep me straight, too, you removed, or it was removes, 9E.
That's correct.
And then we just did 9F.
So, we are now, there's no special recognitions or presentations. We are now on boards and commissions. The first item is number 6A, which is the North Brevard Commission on Park and Recs. This is the North Brevard Commission on Park and Recs semi-annual report as written, and it's included in your packet. No action is required of council.
Okay.
Next item is 6B, which is the Titusville Housing Authority. The Titusville Housing Authority's semi-annual written report is included in your agenda packet. No actions We are now to petitions and requests.
Yes, we are. Petitions, requests from the public? I see none. Just for the audio part of that, that's not true.
Thank you. Stan Johnston, I'm again presenting myself as a professional engineer, and I'm licensed by the state of Florida to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And I've reported many times to the council and to the city manager numerous violations of laws and illegal things the city of Titusville is doing, and surprisingly, surprising, the city has nobody to dispute me. I mean, a professional to dispute me, which is a concern because you've got millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars. Can't you hire another professional engineer to dispute what I tell you? So, what I've done is I sent you an email today, an email today regarding the numerous violations by the city of Titusville. False reports, serious violations that FS 838.022, official misconduct. We're talking about a felony by the city of Titusville, which appears that it makes you guys accessories to this felony, this false report. So, here's this email that I'm reading to you, and you haven't commented on, but I've had some city employees come to me and thank me for what I'm doing. I don't think it's very much thanks from you guys, but, so here's what this is, April 11th. It says, unlike Brevard County and Satellite Beach, Titusville Council denies, denies dangers and denies sewage spills into people's yards, nine city streets, pollution of our Indian River, shame on city council. That's just the title. I wouldn't like to have more time. So, what I've done is I've sent you an article of the way Brevard County and Satellite Beach handled a spill, which through Titusville doesn't do anything like that. In other words, they put up, they went door to door, warned people. They put up these signs that say contaminated water, and they did a number of things. They even said, officials say they would keep residents updated regarding school crossings in the area. So, what we had during Hurricane Eon, we had water flooding, flooding a number of people's yards. I think it's over 25 yards, and we had 50 homes, at least 50 homes with sewage in the streets, and kids played in them, and nobody put the signs up, although, although I went to City Hall and I posted these red warning alerts, and I went to a number of houses, and yet what the city of Titusville do, they did nothing. So, you violated the law. You say it didn't happen, and I would like you to look into what this is right here. FS 838.022, official misconduct because you're violating laws. It appears that you are accessories to this felony that the city is committing. Maybe you've got an exclusion, but you're bad.
Thank you.
Shame on you.
Anybody else petition or requests?
You're welcome.
I see none. City Manager?
Onto consent agenda. City Council, are there any consent agenda items A through G that you have questions of staff?
I see none yet.
Council, are there any consent agenda items A through G that you'd like to pull for further discussion?
I see none.
City Clerk, are there any cards on consent agenda items A through G?
Yes, sir. We have one card.
With your permission, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to read the titles for consent agenda item A through G for the record.
Thank you, City Manager.
Consent agenda item 8A, approve the water and sewer agreement partial, for partial number 22353400505. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the morning treatment plant roof repairs. Consent agenda item 8C, approve the lawn maintenance for water production contract. Consent agenda item 8D, approve the water treatment plant lime solo rehabilitation. Consent agenda item 8E, approve the use of JEA contract number 189884 with DMD Consultants Incorporated for routine fire hydrant maintenance. Consent agenda item 8F, approve the reduction in trade and allowance for the city's street sweepers. Consent agenda item 8G, approve the transfer of the pond water purchase order. This was an emergency purchase order.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, call the cards, please.
Stan Johnston, registered professional engineer, and I'm here on an official capacity. My job is to report problems with health, safety, and welfare of the public. I'm licensed by the state. Now, essentially, there's some evidence, evidence right now. I got that evidence yesterday, evidence of the sewage spill that you guys deny. What that is, is a piece of foam that is sticking out of, around the pipes that water resources went and sprayed that foam in there to reduce the flow of the sewage into Baker subdivision at the lift station. So, that's evidence. That's more evidence, in other words, of what's going on here, is of the dishonesty of this guy right here and water resources. False reports approved by the city of Titusville. This is nonsense. You guys are guilty. You guys are guilty of false reports. Let me read it to you again. 838.022. It says, "It is unlawful for a public servant, blank, 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 for unknowingly and intentionally obtain a benefit of any person to cause unlawful harm." So, bring the example, number A, falsifying or causing another person to falsify any official record or official document. This is the false report. Concealing, cover-up, destroying, mutilating, or altering any official record. It's what you've done. Any person who violates this section commits a felony. How about that, guys? How about that, guys? This is your big felony now that you're following, and what you're doing is you're covering up. What do you say to your city manager? "I got your back. I got your back, buddy. I'm going to let it go. I'm going to go ahead, and we're going to deny this sewage spill," even though you've got photos, videos, all kinds of witnesses, and I have city employees coming to me saying, "Please, continue what you're doing, Stan. You're telling the truth." How about that? And you know what? On this email that I sent you guys, which I've also said is shame on you, is you still got closed doors. Talk about bad. That's why I've asked you just recently, saying, "Just adjourn the meeting." You have no business conducting business under these circumstances of such flagrant dishonesty. It's open and notorious dishonesty that all of you guys, city council members, CRA, you're guilty of. Even when you go to church, you're still guilty. Even when you speak on a pulpit, you're still guilty. I'm serious. So, you need to straighten up, and right now, you're doing a disservice to the public, a disservice. You're jeopardizing the health, safety, and welfare of the public. Spraying women and children and babies with sewage is no good. Having children playing in the sewage when it says you're supposed to post signs and you're supposed to advise the public, and you don't do it, that's your negligence, and you're doing it. You did it again and again and again. That's bad. Thank you.
Any others? Okay. Motion?
Move to approve consent, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Go on.
Consent agenda items A through G.
All right, second. I have a motion to approve consent agenda A through G. Member Nelson, I have a second from Vice Mayor. Roll call, vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes unanimously. City Manager?
Onto item 9A, which is the elected official compensation proposed adjustments. This is the public hearing for ordinance number 212023, amending section 2-28.
Ordinance number 212023, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending section 2-28 of the Code of Ordinances by increasing the salary of council members and mayor, providing for severability, incorporation under the code, and providing for an effective date.
The authorized salaries of the mayor and city council members have not been increased outside of periodic cost of living adjustments since 1998. Recent compensation and benefits survey appear city legislative bodies is attached for your consideration. The proposed monthly salary levels with an effective date of 24 April are attached for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Council, anything you want to add to that? Member Nelson?
Yeah, I'm just going to say, I don't think any of us ran for office with the idea that we were going to make a fortune out of this, but looking at the other cities, and especially the Lega cities, their charts, what other councils are making, I think this is appropriate. So, that's my thought.
Member Stokel?
Yeah, I was just going to agree. I appreciated the information. We got, I think, a wealth of information from our own county, and then the Florida Lega cities when I was up there. I mentioned it to them, and they said, "Oh, we have some resources," and I appreciated them being able to provide it based on population size and budget size. I don't know about you guys, but every time I go out and give a presentation and I tell people how much I make, they're like, "What?" Like, that's it. And so, I think just also thinking about in the future, when I'm trying to get other people interested in running, it can be very difficult and, and say this as politely as I can, to try to get younger people to actually run. It can be challenging. So, I think that this is, will be beneficial for multitude of reasons.
I think basically it's not been dealt with since 1998. I don't think anybody's getting greedy here and saying, "Wow, let's do this every year." How long is it? 980818? Long time. And I think, as you noted, Member Stokel, this situation here, I think is more about down the road. But even at this, first, we're not talking, this is like a supplement kind of thing in coaching and in high school. So, that being said, it's not about, "Hey, I'm going to apply for this job." It's going to, no, you're just, you know, it's not, if nothing else, it hasn't been addressed since 1998, and that's a problem. So, anyway, anything else? Anybody else? Call the card.
Stan Johnston, registered professional engineer, and I spoke on this matter last time it was brought up, and I said, "You don't deserve it. You don't deserve it, not for this open and notorious dishonesty. You don't do it. I mean, open notorious dishonesties, especially from your city manager, and what are you doing, being parrots or puppets when you approve these things that are complete nonsense? Open notorious dishonesty. Spraying women and children with, let's say, raw sewage instead of saying piss and poop. It's dangerous. It's dangerous what you're doing, and now you're being sued by somebody for paralysis of some boy who says he was in the river, and by golly, that river was polluted. We had, I don't know, at least four, we have a number of sewage spills that were not reported, and fish kills. We had a fish kill on this last one in Hurricane Eon. It wasn't reported. Sewage spill and fish kill, it wasn't reported. We have sewage going into FDOT rightways, and you're supposed to report it. You don't report it. You don't deserve any kind of raise at all. What you're going is, you're going, let me say, the truth is, is that, is that city employee says, "You're afraid of me. I'm telling the truth, and you're afraid of the truth." I'm talking to you guys, whether you're a pastor or what you are, you're afraid of the truth. The truth is, is that this guy's lying, and your covering is back, and you're accessories to all this, you're accessories to these criminal things. And if you guys lose this suit about this young boy, I might be on the stand. They'll probably put me on the stand. I'm in contact with him right now. So, as far as I can see, you guys are accessories to this, if that's the case, and I will make sure that whatever it is, is I'm going to tell the truth. And are you going to, guys going to continue to say is, "It never happened. It never happened," although I've got videos, videos of the sewage going in, going into the river, videos, videos of it going into the streets, videos, not just photos, witnesses, and look at that, more evidence, evidence that's there right now, right now, right now, evidence is still there. We still got, you can still go, and you can see foam that water resources sprayed in there. So, you guys are being, you don't deserve a raise, not at all. You should shut down City Hall and do something, but whatever you do, if you fire him, don't give him any kind of, what do you call it, gold parachute or something, or even any kind of, what do you call it, pension. Don't give him a pension. That'd be a million dollars right there that you're wasting. So, I'm asking you to use some sense. Thank you.
I do feel that with the Boy Scouts sitting out there, you're not here every week. You don't under, go ahead and have a seat, Stan. You don't realize that this is, every week we hear the same thing, same things, and whether he believes it or not, that's fine. I will tell you that, I'll speak for myself, that I have no problem looking myself in the mirror and knowing that I'm on... the mirror and knowing that I'm honest. I'm not gonna try to convince anybody of anything. But when someone stands up there over and over and tells us we're dishonest, city manager's dishonest, I will tell you, if I thought that was true, I wouldn't be here. I wouldn't be in coaching. I wouldn't be in teaching. I wouldn't go to church, and I wouldn't be here. So Stan and I have talked before, and I have no problem disagreeing with Stan. He certainly has no problem disagreeing with me. I have never said to, on a microphone, about Stan, what he says about me and us. And that's, I just want to let you guys know, this is not a normal occurrence, if you want everywhere. I don't want you to be discouraged. So with that being said, I need a motion. Oh, wait, do I have any other cards? Need a motion?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I make the motion to approve the elected official compensation proposed adjustment.
Second.
Yeah, just to confirm, that's ordinance number 212023.
What was that?
It is.
The date?
The ordinance. Ordinance 212023.
Ordinance 212023.
All right, I have a motion from Vice Mayor. I have a second from Member Nelson. Roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. First one since 1998. City Manager?
Onto item nine B, which is ordinance number 272023, antenna ordinance. The attorney will read for the record.
Yes, and this is the first reading and first public hearing of ordinance number 272023. An ordinance of the city of Tiesville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances to create antenna as an accessory use with limitations by amending section 28 dash 342 accessory use table and creating section 28 dash 351.5 antenna, including standards for the use with limitations, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
This is the first reading and public hearing. The final public hearing is scheduled for the regular city council meeting on 25 April 2023 at 6:30. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance at their five April 2023 meeting and recommended approval as presented and requested exploration of height limits. They voted seven zero. Mr. Parrish is here to answer any questions, if you may, on this first reading.
Any questions? I see no questions. City Clerk, if there are any cards, I will assume that they are on number 272022, antenna ordinance.
One card. Stan Johnston.
We're talking antennas.
Good evening. I'm Stan Johnston, and I've seen a number of, I'm a professional engineer, I've said that. And I've seen numerous revisions to antenna ordinance regarding how it's constructed and how many feet it's supposed to be clearance to the property line and so forth. And guarantees that if it's, it's so far, it's not going to fall over this way, it's gonna fall down this way, some kind of a collapsing, so forth like that. So I'm not sure about how well it's going to be, but we've had, we've had numerous, I've been here 50 years, and we've had numerous revisions of this, so hopefully we'll get it right this time, hopefully. And I'm saying getting it right, especially because, because the thing is, is that we do not have, in the city of Tiesville, checks and balances. In other words, when I have a problem, I come to city council, no, excuse me, I'll take it back. I go to city staff. Okay. I go to city staff and talk to them, hey, you know, I've got a problem here, and maybe they won't, maybe they'll call me back, maybe they won't. Right now, it's a lot of times the city staff won't even talk to me, especially Water Resources. So, so what I do is I go ahead and I say, well, you know, I think I need to get an answer. So I go to Human Resources. I go to Human Resources, I said, you know, this guy won't even, won't even answer the phone. I mean, when he answers the phone, he hangs up on me. That's City Tiesville. It's true. I call City Tiesville, and somebody says hello, and I say, I'm Stan Johnston, click. That's how bad it is. Water Resources, I've called them many times, and I leave, they don't, they don't have now, they don't have a person answering the phone. Now, I think it's because of me. They don't have someone answer the phone. What they do is they have, you put your message on an answering machine, and I think it's because of me. None of that is, is that Water Resources, what they do is, they have a trespassing saying, I'm not allowed to go to their office. They don't tell me why. They said, they didn't like, they didn't like me when I drove my car up, it was covered with sewage. So what do they do? They call the police department and say, hey, we don't want this guy in Water Resources. We want him to go to the sewage treatment plant. So, so what I'm saying to this is, is that we've got problems here, and, and I don't like what's going on, and I think that you should table it until you straighten things out. In other words, when I go, when I went to, to Human Resources, Human Resources says, well, I'm not gonna do anything about it. Cause they have, for example, the fire department, fire marshal, he's, he's under the fire, fire chief, so he doesn't have to talk to you.
So that's your last word on antennas today?
Yeah, I think you should straighten. In other words, I want you to, to table it and adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one thing I need to add.
Okay, please.
Regarding this ordinance. At the P and Z meeting, they've stated a, and requested exploration of height limit. So there was a question as to whether this ordinance actually limits the height to the zoning district. So for example, zoning districts have, some zoning districts have a maximum height limit of all structures, and whether this ordinance will allow an antenna which can go up to 20 feet above that height. And so I believe the P and Z is really asking for councils to, whether they want to consider stating or clarifying in this ordinance that that height can't exceed the zoning district, or we will allow antennas to be on top of a building that might be at that max height in that particular zoning district. So if you're okay with, if you'd like us to clarify, we can state that the maximum height of all structures combined with building and antenna cannot exceed the maximum height within the zoning district, or we can say that there's an exception here, that the antenna can be on top of a building that could be higher than the maximum height of a particular zoning district requirement.
Which does staff feel better with?
I believe that is probably, if you allow flexibility, it'll encourage these antennas to be on existing structures versus having to create a new structure in a particular property. So I think flexibility of allowing it to possibly exceed that maximum, that zoning district is preferable.
I would agree with that. Is that some way we do this? We've got to put that part into the motion?
You can, and we can just add that language into the ordinance.
Member Nelson?
There's not a motion tonight, they can just bring that back.
You're right, you're right. We're moving right along here.
Excuse me, yeah, we can bring that back.
So if we had a 35-foot building, and we put a 20-foot antenna on top of it, so that would be acceptable. Make sure I'm, I'm understanding it right.
Yeah, there's other standards in this, in this ordinance that talk about aesthetics, color, and other things that we'd have to address. So this pretty much came about, you saw the advisability, it was dated 2019.
Yeah.
A little late trying to get this back to you. It really started because there were a lot of questions about adding antennas to existing commercial structures and commercial zoning districts, and also to multifamily structures and multifamily zoning districts. We didn't see these kind of requests in single-family areas that have a max of 35 feet. So for example, there is a residential district, it's multifamily, allows a multifamily structure in it, and may have a max of 35 feet. Yes, if we go forward with what I'm suggesting here, they would be allowed to put up an antenna on top of that building. It would have to meet these other standards in here as well, so that, some aesthetic standards.
I like that. And if you need to summarize or edify us on that when we do vote, that'd be fine, but I like what you're saying. Anything else from counsel? All right, City Manager?
Onto item nine C, which is ordinance number 282023, mobile food vendors.
Hold on one second.
We received a new card just now on the item you just finished, so.
Oh, the last item? Oh, that's what he's just telling me, just so we know. Okay, I guess we go back. We digress. I missed it. I must have been looking the other way.
I'm sorry, I had the card prepared, and then I thought, I won't delay the meeting time, I'm wanting to get home for dinner. Shifalo Tropic Street. I'm concerned somewhat about more, so communication towers, but antennas that puts alarms out to me. You know, Tropic Street, we're very close to that electronic tower.
Thing that makes noise.
And the noise, and now the flashing light. Fortunately, I'm not tending towards epilepsy, so the flashing light doesn't really.
I have one of those, too.
Bother me. So I would like to make sure that the antenna ordinance addresses noise from tower, from antennas, and scrub lights. And, I mean, I realize safety issues, airlines, airplanes, et cetera, but.
I'm starting to notice more of those have flashing lights myself.
Yeah.
So I think that's a good add.
I think what you're referring to are standalone towers, like cell towers or communication antennas. These are.
I realize about antennas, Brad, my brother's a television engineer, and he has, fortunately, he's not, not here, he has all kinds of antennas rigged to do all kinds of things, to get broadcast TV, for instance, and radio. He monitors airplanes flying over. So there are a variety of antennas, I realize that. I just still want to watch out that we don't allow noisy ones and light flashing ones.
Yeah, even if it's not pertinent, what I see, what you're saying, I think is worthy of noting.
Thank you.
Like I said, I'm starting to notice more, even the power poles are starting to have more of these flashing lights. I thought, does that flash at me? All right, thank you very much. We're back over here. Yes, sir.
Now, onto ordinance number 282023, mobile food vendors. This is the first reading, and city attorney will read for the record.
That's correct. This is also a first public hearing. Ordinance number 282023, an ordinance of the city of Tiesville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by establishing mobile food dispensing vehicles pursuant to section 509.102 Florida statutes, including definitions, exemption from the requirement to obtain a business tax receipt from the city, setting forth purpose and intent, license, location, and operational requirements, enforcement, and penalty provisions, and by amending section 11 dash 331 definitions, by creating article 16, mobile food dispensing vehicles, and amending chapter 28 zoning, by creating section 28 dash 145.1, mobile food dispensing vehicle, and amending section 28 dash 54 use table, and amending chapter 37 definitions, section 37 dash 1 definitions, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, and incorporation into the code.
This is the first reading and the public hearing. The final public hearing is scheduled for the regular city council meeting on 25 April 2023 at 6:30. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance at their five April 2023 meeting and recommended approval as presented, seven zero. Mr. Parrish is here to answer any questions that counsel may have on this first reading and first public hearing.
Mr. Parrish, you have anything there?
I just want to state on page 340, those are the standards for this type of use. We've carried over existing standards we have in our code to this new particular use, it's just not going to require a business tax in this case. And then there are zoning standards on page 348 of your packet. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions you have about this.
Any questions? I see none. Call the card.
Stan Johnston?
Food trucks.
Stan Johnston, registered professional engineer. Good evening. And if I could put you guys in a timeout chair, that's what I would do, but I can't do that. I can do that with the grandsons, but not you guys. But, is that, Robert's Rules of Order, which I'm not a council member, but you can bring up adjournment at any time. It supersedes, it supersedes about all other, other motions made in Robert's Rules of Order, in German. So you can adjourn this meeting at any time. And that's what I would hope that you would do, because I was mentioning just about, you know, the human resources, didn't respond, then I would go to the city manager, and he wouldn't respond. So there's no checks and balances. I go to the city council, and the city council closed doors, they won't respond. Now, I've sent, for example, to, to everybody here, except Mr. Diesel, he's, he's, he's had lunch with me and so forth like that. We don't talk about sewage spill, but we talk about football and some things, wrestling.
We talk about other stuff.
Yeah, good stuff, good stuff. And we have fun.
We do.
Yeah, we do. We have a good meal. Thank you. Good meal, together.
You teach me things about hot sauce. See? I do get along with it.
And you teach, you teach me some things about football and good life, and taking care, and taking care of family and things like that. Mr. Diesel's a good guy.
You're killing me.
But here's what, what I'm doing, is that there's, there's some, like, there's this sewage spill that happened, and that, there's more evidence, and I got videos, I got videos of another sewage spill, and I'm asking you guys to adjourn this meeting.
Stop the clock. Okay, you made that request, that was your, your topic, because you didn't talk about food trucks at all.
Yes, sir.
So I'm going to say that when I give the answer, your time is done here.
I, I tell you what, I'd like to just use about 20 more seconds, and that's it. That's it.
And then you'll be done for the night?
Yes, sir. No, no, not done for the night, done for this.
I need you to talk about food trucks, and that doesn't mean you're going to, because you talk about being honest and doing what you're supposed to do and time out.
All right. What we, when we, when we look at food trucks, and what we're gonna do with food trucks, we've got to be honest. We've got to be honest. And unfortunately, is that I have, I have approached council with many issues of dishonesty, especially by our city manager, which you've got us to approve, especially, for example, this sewage consent order 21 dash 0113.
Stop the clock. You're good. Thank you. That's 20 seconds.
Okay.
You're good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay.
Next card.
Be truthful.
Shame on you.
All right. Moving on.
Onto item nine D, which is the easement vacation, number one dash 2023, for location of 3585 Bell Harbor Circle. The applicant, application was submitted by the property owners of 3585 Bell Harbor Circle, Mr. and Mrs. Robinson, requesting to vacate a portion of the existing public utility easement in order to construct a swimming pool. Staff has no issues with this vacation of a five-foot portion of the 10-foot public easement on the property located at 3585 Bell Harbor Circle related to ordinance resolution number 112023. Staff's here to answer any questions that you may have on this vacation.
What you got there, Mr. Parrish?
I'll answer any questions you have.
Any questions? I think it's pretty cut and dry, quite honestly, but let's move forward. Applicant, please.
They're here just to answer questions. Amelia Robinson, in Hurst House.
Just questions? Okay. Call the cards. Counsel, anything? No.
We have Stan Johnston.
Pass if you want.
Stan Johnston, I'm speaking to you as a professional engineer under my license. My license is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. That's my license. And I'm speaking also, this is a cross judicial item. Please pay attention, I'm an expert witness. And what I see, what's going on here, is this, this meeting should not proceed.
Expert witness, talk about Bell Arbor Circle.
I'm talking about what is going to happen at this, this meeting, and this is a cross judicial meeting. And what I see is, is that, is that there's extreme prejudice shown here towards that which is not the truth. Arbitrary and capricious decisions, absolute nonsense from the city council, absolutely.
Stop the clock. And I'm getting tired of stopping the clock and trying to get you on task. You talk about putting people in timeout. You've been in the corner a long time ago. You are not on task, as they say. So I need you to be on task. So I need you to be on task. If you're not going to be on task, I'm going to say, are you going to say anything about this? And you're going to say, I'm talking about this? I'm going to say, we're done. I don't want to do that, because you have been on task sometimes, and it's good to hear things when you're on task. But you're not doing that now. You purposely come up, you're not going to talk about this. So let's see what we can do with that. Time, start the clock.
Okay. Well, understanding that this is a quasi judicial item.
It is.
And what I'm saying is, is that, is that, is that there are special problems here in this chamber that has to do with a number of members who's going to vote on this. And it's a big deal. It's a serious issue, and you guys are not responding. I have sent you emails again and again, almost every council meeting, for you to contact me, and you have closed doors, except for Mr. Diesel. In other words, I've had numerous promises from Mr. Robinson to meet with me. He's talked to me on the phone, but wouldn't meet with me. And one, two, three, these people have never met, met with me. Never. Sarah Stokel's never met with me.
I haven't.
Oh, one time, that's right. One time, it was about four years ago, five years ago, maybe?
All right, go on.
Other than that, other than that, it was, there's, there's no meeting. But Mr. Diesel has met with me a few times. But the thing is, you've got open and notorious dishonesty, and it shouldn't be, you shouldn't be making the decisions.
You're not going to talk about Bell Harbor Circle, so I'm going to ask you to go ahead and sit down, and we'll move forward.
Okay, I refuse. At this time, as a quasi, in this quasi judicial, I, I, at this time, I don't believe you have the authority to do that.
Okay, I, I, I'll see, I, I do the point over there. That's what I'm going to do. As you know, been discussed a million times. He's not on topic. Anybody who's not on topic needs to give up the podium. I can't get him on topic.
Yes, especially with quasi judicial. In fact, the rules to speak don't necessarily include quasi. It needs to be based on competent substantial evidence in the matter at hand. So, yes, under your rules of decorum. And, and I can read this if you'd like.
Please.
The purpose of the city council meeting is to discuss city business. Property's coram must be displayed by all in attendance. Public input and participation is encouraged. However, all persons in attendance shall comply with the rules for meeting procedures and refrain from actions that disrupt or delay proceedings of the council meeting or hinder the council from performing its duties. No person shall interfere with the rights of others to speak, hear, see, or attend proceedings, make threats of violence, disrupt the proceedings with shouting, fail to confine remarks to the agenda item under consideration, nor continue to speak after the allotted speaking time has expired, as these actions shall be considered disruptive and disorderly. Mayor, you're asking me about one particular is failure to confine remarks to the agenda item under consideration shall be considered disruptive and disorderly. The mayor shall caution any person who violates these provisions and disrupts the orderly proceeding of the council meetings, and they shall be directed to comply. Any person who fails to comply as cautioned shall be ruled out of order, shall forfeit the remainder of their speaking time on that agenda item under consideration, and will be requested to return to their seat. Persons who fail to comply as directed shall be subject to removal from the council chambers by law enforcement or such other actions as may be reasonably necessary to enforce these regulations. Notwithstanding, the mayor may order the immediate removal of any person from the chambers who poses a threat to property or life safety. Nothing in this section shall be construed to limit or restrict a person's rights created by constitutional law, ordinance, or regulation.
So clearly, we've got to be on topic. And clearly, I'm not looking to do any throwing out thing. I think you saw last week how I felt about that with you.
Yeah.
So that being said, you've not been on topic.
Well, what I can do is.
You just basically want to talk about other people and this and that. So I will always give you a warning and say, get on topic. But if you're not on topic the next time, we're just going to say, you've done your part, let's just sit down and relax.
All right, okay.
So.
Okay, I believe I'm on topic. However, I'm going to, I, I'm going to sit down, but I disagree with what you're doing. I believe that I, I have the right to, to talk about.
I keep waiting for something to talk about. Food, food trucks or anything like that. You just can't, it's not been a good night for that. Let's work on it, so we still got time left.
Hopefully, you guys are being honest about this food truck issue.
We're always, I'm very honest. Thank you.
Well.
Have a seat. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm sitting down, what do you got?
Under duress.
Under duress. Thank you. Next card.
Council.
Yes, you know, and I would say that Mr. Mayor to approve this just because of their last name, but I won't say that.
Don't say that. Don't say that. He didn't say that.
I, I, but I won't say that. But considering everything and then reading over it and what the staff has said, I recommend approval.
Second.
I've got a motion from the vice mayor, a second from member Cole. Roll call, vote.
And this includes approval of the resolution 112023?
Before I go further, got caught up a little bit there. This is quasi. I do want, and I know the answer, but I want to make sure I do this. The applicant has the right to speak again before we vote. You're fine. Thank you. All right, back to the city clerk.
I was just asking, does this include approval of resolution 112023? Yes.
He make the motion.
Okay. I, I made the motion to approve the easement vacation application, 123-3585 Bell Harbor Circle.
Second.
Right, and related resolution 11-2023.
Relationship with resolution 1122.
And I think that's all she was asking for, that addition. Okay, roll call, vote. We've got the motion correctly, and we have the second.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Thank you guys very much. Appreciate all you do for everybody and everything. Good to see you. All right, city manager.
Onto item 11A, which is old business, and this is the American Rescue Plan ARPA Affordable Housing Request Proposal, number 23P027 Funding Recommendation. On 21 June 2022 and 28 March 2023, respectively, city council authorized the disbursement of ARPA funds in a combined total amount of $945,410 for affordable rental housing projects. On 1 February 2023, the Neighborhood Services Department released RFP number 23P027 for shovel-ready projects targeting rental housing for seniors, workforce, and/or homeless households. The RFP was posted on the city's website and advertised through Demandstar and solicited via email to all qualified community housing development organizations in Brevard County. On 1 March 2023, the Neighborhood Services Department received one response to the RFP from Community of Hope Incorporated. The RFP was reviewed by the Neighborhood Services staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission liaison member of the Affordable Housing Committee. The criteria was met. Staff recommends that you approve the ARPA funding for Hope Hammock Phase II Affordable Housing Development located at 550 South Brown Avenue in the amount of $945,410 and authorize the city to enter into the development agreements. Terry is here to answer any questions that you may have on this project.
Anything you want to add, or are we just questions?
No, sir. Nothing to add. The Drew Warden, the executive director with Community of Hope, is here to provide any additional information or answer any questions council has about the project.
Very good. Counsel, anything on this?
Yes.
You ought to be the guy to know something.
I'm aware of it. Is the, we know that we're using, you're asking for the City of Titusville ARBA funds. Is the county putting any funding on this project?
I, if we could have Drew come up, he could outline the pro forma for us on that, on the funding.
Just saw Drew at League of Cities last night.
Yes, sir. Glad to see you again.
Yes, you was. Good presentation last night.
Thank you.
And look forward to hearing from you.
So, as to your question, this portion, the county did not put any funding toward yet. They, they may yet put some funding toward it. I don't, we, we are going to request it. That, that said, we, the funding is not required. It cash flows with, without the county funding. But of course, with the clientele that we want to serve, we want to keep the rent as affordable as possible, we want to make sure it's sustainable as long as possible. So we will ask the county for further funding. It, it is not a likelihood, but we, this is the second phase of a two-phase project, and the first phase was, had quite a bit of county funding in it. You're welcome.
Member Nelson?
I just want to ask you this for people who don't have access to all our agenda, or are reading all our agenda. When do you expect to start? When do you expect this to be complete?
So we have the good fortune of being ready to go. We will need to do a, an RFP to, for general contractor. That'll take a little bit of time, but the site's already cleared. We have the zoning, we have the, the permitting, so we should be able to get started fairly quickly. I'm anticipating by July that we're actually working on the units, and I'm told by the general contractor on phase one that the, that given all of the prep work that's been done and, and the, the site is all ready for, for laying a slab, that it'll be a very quick process. So I think it would be fair to say less than eight months, 10 months at most.
So next spring.
Yeah.
And this unit, this phase two, will house how many people?
So phase two is six units, so that is three, three-bedroom units. They will, it'll be for families, so figuring about three, three per household, and maybe a little more than that, at least 18.
Okay. Great.
You're welcome.
Anything else from council? No, Drew, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Mayor, if I may, just wanted to also point out that in your decision, that we have two agreements that we will enter into with the developer, and that is a subaward agreement for the ARBA money, and then also a mortgage and land use agreement.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Counsel, anything else? All right. Call the card.
Stan Johnston.
That's why I say call the card. Say cards.
Stan Johnston, registered professional engineer and resident of Titusville over 50 years. I used to work for the City of Titusville for over seven years, and I retired from the City of Titusville as a, as a civil engineer, a professional engineer, and they used me some of my license as a surveyor, too. So this is my business card, and I had a different business card, I used to save the City of Titusville. But I've been a PE since 1976, and that's over 45 years, and I think it is, you know, over 45 years. And I'm licensed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public, and the, that's what the Florida statute says, and that I have on my card, I read from, this is my business card, reading from my business card, says item number three is ignorance of the law is no excuse. And that has to do with especially in the City of Titusville, repeatedly violated by the City of Titusville, water flows downhill, dams.
Stop, stop, stop the clock. Every time you speak, we're stopping the clock, and we're going to get this thing done tonight. Bottom line is, we're talking about, what are we talking about right now? What's the items?
We're talking about this particular item that is, has to do with Terry and this, and the budget and so forth. It's spending money, it's spending money on the rescue plan.
It's ARPA Affordable Housing Request. Have you said anything about that yet?
Well, that's, that's what I, I, and I've done it on my card.
What's up on your card doesn't do anything here. So that being said, I need you to talk about the ARPA, because that's what you're up to do.
That's what I'm here for.
And I'm waiting to hear.
Okay.
Because if we don't get there soon, I'm going to say, I request that you sit down, so go.
Well, historically, what, what has happened in the City of Titusville is that regarding, this is money.
It's ARPA, and we're talking about housing.
It says $945,000. I think that's money.
That is money.
All right. Why don't you stay on track? We're talking about $945,000, Mr. Diesel.
What were we spending on?
Pardon?
What do you want to spend it on?
Well, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm asking this, these questions, because I know that Terry does a fantastic job, but sometimes the things that happen that the City of Titusville is doing something, some very crooked things as far as I can say, financially. City of Titusville, crooked. And, and that arbitrary and capricious decisions made by what? By you guys, city council. And you need, and so, so I'm just reading from, I'm just giving you an introduction about just, this is just my business card, just reading from the business card. I think you gave me time enough to read, read this. Just reading the business card, didn't, I'm skipping the thing. So I said the City of Titusville is violating laws, water flows downhill, dams, wears require convinced storage, floods, floodways. This, these are, these are, these are things that cost money. These are money big time, millions and millions and millions of dollars. That's what I'm talking about. Floodways outside of city limits require maintenance, numbered AE 100-year flood zones require calculations. This is talking about millions of dollars, and you were involved very much in that Baker subdivision issue. So, so the city, city needs to look at this, this thing as about the money being spent and what's going on behind the scenes. And behind the scenes, it's, it's dishonesty. Thank you.
Any other card?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counsel? Mayor, Vice Mayor?
Just the motion to approve when you, when it is appropriate.
Go ahead. I, I see no other names up there, so I think it appropriate.
All right. Mayor, I make the motion to approve the ARPA Affordable Housing Request for proposal number 23P-20, 027 Funding Recommendation, and to enter into all of the, the appropriate agreements that are required to carry out this project.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor.
Second.
I have a second from member Nelson. Roll call, vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. City manager, before we go into new business, I'm going to take a seven-minute recess.
Thank you.
Got to do better here. Gotta do better here. All right, welcome back to the city council meeting, city manager.
Onto, uh, item twelve B, which is affordable housing property disposition program and community land trust advisability.
Twelve A?
Oh, Ron A.
Twelve, I'm sitting, I'm thinking deeply, I'm like, twelve A?
Thank you very much for catching that.
We're gonna, we're gonna get out of here.
Uh, onto, onto twelve A, advisability for transitional housing. There's a growing need for alternative housing options, including temporary residential units such as transitional housing for the homeless. The city's land development regulations list domestic violence shelters and recovery halfway house as a permitted transitional housing option in the downtown mixed-use zoning district. Staff requests approval to research and, and explore the implications of expanding transitional housing options into other zoning districts and report back to council with alternatives for those actions. So this is advisability, staff is here to get any feedback that you may have before we go, um, do our research.
And before we, um, toss our advisability, this is one we need to vote in advisability, okay?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, uh, go ahead, staff.
So this question came up recently because of a, um, particular property and then what they're trying to do, and so that just led us to talk about this internally, um, with various, uh, staff members, especially the building department and the fire department, about, uh, what is allowed, and we also spoke with some, uh, other planners about this, to see what the city's code allows. And we really found only two particular types of uses that are listed in the downtown mixed-use that really address this question. So the question before you is, uh, would you like us to spend time exploring this? And bring back any kind of recommendations or alternatives to you to consider possibly allowing or expanding this type of housing option, which is not permanent housing, this is transitional housing, this is more, uh, emergency and protective shelters in other areas of the city.
As much as it is another thing on the list that is so very, very long.
Yeah.
It is hard for me in this day and age not to say, can you research, um, transitional housing? And give us an idea, um, and I, I could say, give us an idea what it is, you kind of just did that. But, uh, give us an idea what you think is feasible for our city. Um, not all transitional housing, I'm sure, works here, uh, it was practical here. But I can't say that I wouldn't want to advise that we would want to get some more feedback and see if it's feasible is the word I'm thinking of, uh, member Cole.
My question, uh, is with the domestic violence, are we able to do this in coordination with the women's center? And the other housing things that we're talking about with the North Bovard Sharing Center, because, you know, when, when, uh, Vice Mayor Robinson was there, they have some fifty-odd houses that they have there, and they have some expertise in that arena. So I'm just, that's a question, uh, or a suggestion, because I definitely support us looking into doing something like this. But I was saying with the domestic violence portion of it, uh, working with the women's center may be advisable, and with the other type of housing, North Bovard Sharing Center may be advisable. That's a suggestion, not a, telling you to do it.
I, I'll be honest, this is very new to me as well, uh, so during our exploration, if you direct us to do that, we can certainly reach out to who we believe are, are stakeholders or experts in this field and certainly get their input.
Member Nelson?
I would love to see you do this, I did talk to some of the people at parish, actually, I was with Drew when I was talking to them. Um, and they were saying that there are people being discharged from the hospital that have no place to go. Um, and they specifically said they had an employee that had a stroke. They kept him in the hospital as long as they could, because when he got out, he was gonna be homeless. And so that sort of breaks your heart. So I think this is something that we need. I think we need it for the people coming out of the hospital, people trying to transition over. So, uh, yeah, whatever we can do.
Uh, vice mayor?
Yes, uh, uh, I, I understand the, uh, the transitional part of this particular, the process, but a, again, uh, when you're talking about the, uh, the downtown area, downtown, affordability is going to be, uh, a, a big issue in, in, in doing that. I was just running through my head, uh, Main Street and all of the places that used to be on Main Street before you get to the railroad tracks going west, and then, uh, um, that, uh, it's not a whole lot of places that we can, you're gonna find. I'm more interested in the next, uh, ones, uh, finding, doing land banking, so we can be able to do this instead of, you know, concerned about the downtown area, because that, the downtown area is, you, you, you are limited on what you have available to be able to even convert. Uh, there's a lot of places that mixed use, uh, is, uh, classified as a commercial downstairs and residential upstairs and, and so forth, and we don't have that in Titusville per se. I think the, the biggest one is over on Hopkins, I, I think we're commercial. Is that, but downtown and the mixed use, uh, uh, yes, uh, domestic violence shelters and, and, and all of that, but when you get into those types of shelters, the secrecy of their location is very important. And, yeah, downtown mixed use would eliminate that.
If I could say, though, that this could include research into other types of shelters, not specifically a domestic violence shelter, it could be a homeless shelter.
Yeah, right.
Another, so things are not necessarily needs, um,
Well, but I just saw the domestic violence and, and, and homeless, and, and again, you got other, uh, uh, issues. Uh, when, uh, I know that down in South County, not to say that we are like South County, when, uh, uh, Melbourne had a, some large issues with their homeless shelter being located down in the, in the downtown area, and that, that battle's been going on for, uh, for, uh, twenty-five plus years.
Not my backyard, right?
Yeah, not in, uh, and, uh, uh, trying to find, so, uh, when you, you talk about transitional, whether it's, it's homeless and, uh, uh, affordability and, uh, being able to control it, is, uh, uh, the, the people that you are trying to transition are very important to, uh, things to take into consideration. So with that, the downtown, uh, mixed area, yes, I agree, but I don't think you're gonna find, uh, 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 I think that if I was going to, uh, give advisability on staff time, I would, uh, focus in on the next, uh, uh, item more so than this one. That's just speaking from my perspective.
And perhaps that could be part of the advisability and, and the comparison of, of how they relate. I still think we need to look at some, affordable housing is one thing, but the transitional housing from domestic violence to, uh, becoming homeless, et cetera, I think we at least have to look at that. And, and, and I know you were already on top of it, but, so I, I do think they're both very worthy. Any other counsel remarks? All right, clerk, call card.
Deborah Chambers.
All right, we got a real card.
Good evening, my name is Deborah Chambers, and I'm here on behalf of Esther's Place, which is ten twelve Main Street. The Yana Club or A A Gateway donated the property to us in twenty twenty. It was a crack house when we got it, and we've got it cleaned up. We, um, are in the process of applying for a permit, but we have been stonewalled and stonewalled and stonewalled. That, our purpose is to help the ladies on the street there get off the street. There is a mixed conglomerate of the reasons they're there, some are on drugs, some are on disability, and they don't have enough money to pay for rent anywhere, so they're stuck out there. I have come there in the morning and found the trash cans under the deck with women sleeping in them because they're too afraid to be out in the open. We have ministered to two hundred and forty women in the two and a half years we've been there.
Wow.
In twenty twenty-one, seven women died on the street due to drug overdoses or murder. Last year, we lost five of our ladies, again, to overdose or murder. This year, we lost one, this lady was dealing with brain cancer. Nowhere to go until she finally went into hospice. The maximum amount of people we can have is six. That means five people can stay, we have a group of volunteers that are gonna help them get GEDs. Uh, we have, uh, Bovard Health Alliance that is gonna help with mental health issues. Some of them have Medicare or Medicaid, that will all help. Uh, we're a church organization, we're under the covering of Rocket Town Church. And we're stalled at the, um, request of the fire marshal to have a fire suppression system. We're not a commercial building, they tell us we're a residential building. The fire suppression system is anywhere between thirty to fifty thousand dollars, we're a five oh one C three. That would take all of our revenue, it would cost almost as much as the building is worth. These people's lives matter. And it is heartbreaking when you go there and find that one of them was murdered last night or OD'd on the street. They're in the car behind the gas station, and nobody's there helping them. We're trying to help them, but we are getting blocked every way we turn. And so we need help to get through that. I understand you can waive some of the, uh, fire suppression system, every bedroom, there are six bedrooms, every bedroom has a window. That is a fire escape. I would love for you to come down and see the building, walk through the building.
Keep going.
See the layout of the building and how we have planned it. We're low income, so we got a volunteer from the, um, engineering program at B C C to help us do our, our,
Well, let me stop you, uh, two main questions, one is, how are you funded?
We are strictly donations.
Strictly donations.
From churches and other people that have come alongside us.
Is this a program you're familiar with, Terry?
No, sir, I'm not.
So this is, this is, that's one thing we might want to start trying to do, is communicate on that, because I was not familiar with it. And if Terry's not familiar with it, I don't think anybody's familiar with it. So that's the first thing, uh, the second thing is, when you're speaking, what exactly are you seeking?
We're seeking help to get through this fire suppression system. We, I have called four different county, counties for all these fire, people who come in and do this suppression systems, and they have to put in sprinkler systems and all, it's like thirty to fifty thousand dollars to have the system put in. Then it's another three to five thousand dollars a year to have them maintained. And it's like the bill, the fire suppression system is like so overkill for the building. Nobody will do it for us. Number one, we're a nonprofit, so we don't have the funds and everything available to pay for, and then the chances of us being able to maintain it are iffy.
City manager, is there a place I should, our personnel, I should direct her, I, I first think of Terry, but we're talking about a lot of fire suppression things here, too.
So I, I hate to put the vice mayor on the spot, but, um, vice mayor established a, uh, a transitional housing unit
Right.
and faced the same
Okay.
uh, fire suppression challenges that, uh, the fire marshal cannot waive.
Right, yes, uh, where, where, where are you located?
We're at ten twelve Main Street, we are the old A A Gateway building.
On the, on the west side of the track.
They donated it to us, mhm.
West side of the track.
That whole section used to be recovery, it was Howe House, it was, uh,
I remember.
Yeah.
I, I,
Yeah, they were all right there. The property was zoned for us to do what we're doing when we got it in twenty twenty. Something happened between then and now that they changed the zoning. So now we're having to jump to new heights.
Ma'am, uh, first, yes, I, I've been there, I know where you are, I remember all of the uses, I, I've been where you are, been in the, the business, uh, for a long time, for a day or two, uh, with, uh, I'm, I'm gonna advise you from where I, I sit now and what I've learned over the years. You need to, uh, try to work with the fire department, the code, to, to try to establish what zone, what you can do, not what you want to do. That's what you need to do, is that, uh, if you, yes, we all have these big ideas, I've been there, done that, and helped a whole lot of folks in this city and throughout this county. But you, you talk to them, say, okay, under my condition, what can I do? Start at that point, and then work up from there. Because if you, it's, it's gonna, it's something you can do, but you can't, uh, have a grandioso, uh, a project when you begin, especially when you have a building and that is as old, uh, and, and, as that building. I, I've been there, had supper there, ate there, slept there, cried there, prayed there, so I know. So I know the building that you're talking about. And so you have to, you have to get a point, talk with the city staff, say, okay, what can I do? And then work from there. That would be my advice.
I tried that, sir. They have me under statute four nineteen. That's not really what I belong. Mr. Severs came and had, yeah, Dwight Severs had a meeting with the city with me. They don't really know where to put me because I'm not a transitional house. I'm a restoration ministry. The most I can have is six people there.
Okay, and that's, and that's correct. I fell under that.
Right.
And you're not going to get around it. That's why I'm telling you right now what you need. I'm suggesting, I'm not telling you, I'm suggesting you what you need to do. Find out what you can do. Start there because you can't, I remember facing that fifty thousand dollar price tag as well, but you would be amazed if you go and do what you can, you can still make a whole lot of difference. You may not be able to make the big difference right at the beginning, but you start where you can and work up from there. That would be my suggestion.
That's what we've been doing.
And I, because I've been where you are, been there, had that fight, had two cup of coffees and a grape soda on top of it while I was fighting. But but they will work with you. They, I'll brag on them any day of the week if you try to understand where they are and use that as a starting point.
And from my point, it just seems as though when Terry doesn't know about you, there needs at least be that communication. I just think of sit down and you give her a better understanding of what you do, and she can tell you what they do. And I'm not saying anything can happen at this moment, but I am saying that there's at least be that acknowledgement of who they are. There seems like there's a really important program going on over there, and I don't think that too many of us, I mean, I'm very familiar with the old Howe House. My dad actually used to go there as a layperson way back in the day. But I was not familiar with what you're doing, and I don't feel bad because Terry wasn't either. So I just, I'm not saying you go to her, she'll have the answer for you, but I am saying that I think the communication needs to start with with our program over at the Harry T. Moore Center because.
I I do owe Ms. Chambers a return phone call. She left me a message yesterday, so I'll give you a phone call, and we'll discuss options.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you.
That's, that's huge, every day.
We're just trying to help them.
I know you are.
Get them, you know.
You've got the greatest man on your side, so keep on working.
Amen. Can you say amen?
If I'd have known this before, I might have told him to get somebody else.
Been there, I said that, too.
Yeah, me, too.
Yeah, thanks, Joe.
Never mind. All right, next card.
Stan Johnston.
Transitional housing.
Transitional housing.
Let me see what you got, Orin.
And I want you guys to do the right thing. Stan Johnston, and I'm not speaking as a P E. this time. How's that sound?
Transitional housing.
But I, I've been working with people who have been on, living in tents and so forth, and people, older people coming out of the hospital, not having a place to go, and all kinds of problems.
Good point.
So I'm going to suggest, suggest some things that is that, is that this is a, like a social services issue, which Terry's involved in. And so some, I think you can get some assistance from Janet Rooks, and I'll give you her phone number. She's a social worker with, under Trinetti's office. Maybe you know her. Her number is three eight three nine three nine three. I want to give you that number because that she's, I worked with a number of people referring her, referring them to her for a number of issues as far as housing and when people are sick and so forth. And and you got aging matters involved in that, and sometimes aging matter doesn't. Anyhow, that's, that's, that's a source that I want to suggest, and I think Daytona has been through some serious problems on this matter. And you might want to talk to some people in the city of Daytona because they've been very expensive. That's all. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you. Any other cards? Counsel.
Do you want that as a motion?
Okay, Member Nelson.
Okay, then I would move to.
Transitional?
Yeah, we're ready.
You want to do?
Okay. The advisement, like, like I stated, Mayor, is that the, the part that concerned me is the DMU zone is that I know that it's not a whole lot they can do, but if you can combine this with the next particular item and do the process together, you know, and maybe some land will be available to do some things like that, like some of those houses. But their lots were so small because those homes are so old. It's a lot of things because I've done a lot of research on this, and when you get down there, but yes, I would hate to be the one to say, no, don't go for it, but I would combine it with the efforts in the, in the next item as well.
In the back of your mind, as you advise us, and we, we seek advisement, that is certainly something you can look at. I think that you can say, well, this works, let's do some transitional, or that really doesn't work, let's see if we can combine it. So I'm not disagreeing. You know more about that area than I do, but I do think that we'd be remiss if we didn't try to assist with transitional housing. We have a motion from Vice Mayor.
Second.
Second from Member Nelson. Roll call vote.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
The advisability passes unanimously. City manager.
Onto twelve B., which is Affordable Housing Property Disposition Program and Community Land Trust advisability. In December 2022, City Council approved the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee's 2023 Housing Incentive Plan, which included an element on creating and utilizing a land trust to promote a permanent supply of affordable housing in Titusville. Staff is seeking advisability from City Council to design an affordable, affordable housing property disposition program and create procedures for such program that's conducive to the ship programs, best practices, and guidelines. Additionally, staff is seeking council's advisability to partner with local community land trust to assist with the implementation of the program through donations of citywide, city-owned properties. And Terry's here to let you know what we're trying to accomplish, and hopefully you'll.
What are we trying to accomplish, ma'am?
So as the city manager stated, you may recall back in December when we received the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee's plan, there was an incentive in there to work on developing a land trust as well as other policies for surplus properties. So recently, we also, there was a Senate Bill one oh two that was just passed that adds additional language to the state statutes that now require cities to develop these policies and procedures for the surplus land and to make that list available on our website. So we're a little ahead of the game with Senate Bill one oh two, but that's going to be our guide as we move forward in developing these policies and procedures. But the main objective is to develop that list. Currently, there's only three properties on it, but as we go along, I'm sure more properties will be added to the list, and then we can use that list and notify land trusts as well as other affordable housing developers of the availability of those lands to build affordable housing. There is a sample of a policy in your packet that kind of gives you an example of what that policy may look like, which would include a ninety nine year lease on the properties so that the properties stay in perpetuity for affordable housing with those developers and land trusts. And that's the purpose, is to try to keep these properties affordable for as long as we can.
Okay. Counsel, question, comment? Yeah, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry, I just read it. I thought, okay.
Yes, the only, when I read this, and the only thing that, that came to mind, and I know about the ones that are presently available and in the land trust process in that thirty nine dollar, thirty nine year, you know, ownership and it returns and it stays in, which is a great, which is a great thing. Normally, the land that the city, any municipality acquires is normally very limited building land. The lots are normally small, undersized and so forth. And I think that we should go forth and work on the land trust activity with, with, with creating the ninety nine year process. But I recommend wholeheartedly that we don't limit it to certain economic zones because if we do, that's when we're going to begin to run into issues. But if we can find out, and also with that package, it is, it is sometime, and I read this in one of those wonderful magazines that I, that Terry and the city manager sent me to read, and that some of the, the land that may have been unusable because of the past activities on that land and so forth, that should be, those types of land, that type of land should be considered for land trust also. So if we can hold it for a time period and let that deteriorate and, and come back for use again, we may be able to, to in the future, work some affordable housing in that, in that area. But working land trust is a great idea. I advise you to go forward. But my recommendation that I wrote on my paper here is just as long as we don't combine it to a socioeconomic zone would be my concern.
Well said. Anything else from counsel? Call the card, please.
One card, Stan Johnston.
Thank you, sir. Permit, permitted, absolutely. Matter of fact, let's go ahead and do the, never mind. Okay, with that, anything else from counsel? All right, let's get a motion.
Moved to provide advisability to develop an Affordable Housing Property Disposition Program.
Second.
And partnership.
You got a motion from Member Nelson, a second from Member Cole. Roll call vote.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. City manager.
Onto twelve C., which is the Code Enforcement Lean Amnesty Program Extension. At the twenty eight March 2023, a petition was made by Rodney Honeck to extend the program until the end of the year, and City Council supported preparation of a resolution for the future consideration. Staff has prepared a draft resolution proposing an extension of the Lean Amnesty Program for an additional six months. Staff recommends approval of Resolution twelve dash 2023, extending the code enforcement Lean Amnesty Program for an additional six months to expire on twenty seven October 2023.
Counsel, anything? Obviously, I think what we're trying to do here is just help some people out that might have got caught in the middle, and I, I just, just hats off, trying to help out. Staff, nothing on this, right? Just making sure you have your shot. Call the cards. Nope, Member Cole.
I was going to make the motion, I guess.
Call cards, yeah. Call card, please.
One card, Stan Johnston.
Amnesty, we're just trying to do a good thing here. Say what? No. Stay on topic.
Okay, all right.
Code Enforcement Lead Amnesty.
You were taking my time.
Go ahead.
Looks good to me. Thank you.
Need more time? Thank you very much. Let's have a motion.
I'll make the motion to, for the Lean Amnesty Program Extension.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Cole, a second from Member Nelson.
Craig, just want to confirm, that's Resolution number twelve, 2023.
Resolution number twelve, 2023.
Correct.
Extending the code, yes.
All right. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. City manager.
Onto item twelve D., which is the approval of the 2023 Water Supply Facilities Work Plan. Florida statutes requires local governments to update their water supply facilities work plan as part of their comprehensive plan within eighteen months of the approval of the regional water supply plan by water, by the water management district. The work plan was updated by staff and submitted to St. John's River Water Management District in February 2023 for approval. Recommendations related to the St. John's River Management, Water, Water Management District Supply Plan were incorporated into the work plan and has been finalized for approval. The potable water level of service will change as reflected in the work plan and will be presented as, as a comprehensive plan amendment later in the year. It's recommended that City Council approve and adopt the 2023 Water Supply Facilities Work Plan. And Kevin's here to answer any questions that you may have regarding the work plan.
Kevin, you give us a couple of thoughts about the work plan or just a little summary so we feel knowledgeable.
Yeah, sure. Some of the key takeaways, if you take a look at the water demand projections by 2040, current trend will be deficit in water supply, so we'll have to look at changing our cups and so forth to add more well-filled withdrawals to bring our water supply up at that point, but we're covered through 2035 population projections. The plan also goes in a little bit about some opportunities for more conservation, some changes to bring in additional reuse facilities online to, to offset potable water being used for irrigation and so forth that lead to more conservation activities. So the only other major takeaway is that at the suggestion or request of St. John's will be lowering the per capita gallon usage that's in the comprehensive plan that's currently sits at ninety six point four to be lowered to eighty one, which are, is the actual usage for the last year. So, so other than that, you know, we have sufficient supplies up until the point, and a lot of this is based on projections that we'll have to continue to monitor actual usage. A lot of reservations are in place that will switch to real usage as time goes on.
Well, thank you, Kevin. Appreciate that. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I, I just want to commend you. I thought this was a very informative book. When I went through it, it answered so many questions, gave me so much information about the water process, where the line goes, what's what. It's very, very, and if I had to recommend a, a book to the council to, to read, to hold on to as we face problem, issues, to be able to trace the lines and so forth, this would be a good, this manual is a very good manual.
Once again, good job. Anything else from counsel? All right, call the card.
We have, we have two cards, Tony Shifalo.
Shifalo, Tropic Street. I wanted to say it first, but Member Robinson beat me to it about how great the manual was. And I looked at it, and my suggestion is, the citizens are always upset thinking you aren't doing anything about saving the Indian River Lagoon and how bad the water is and blah, blah. And you're upset because you think this, citizens don't notice or know about what you're doing to save the Indian River Lagoon and to get the water system all up to date and keeping up with the infrastructure as the growth happens all over the surface. And I think that tonight I have seen two documents that as, as a curious citizen and an inquisitive person, these two documents, the one that the CRA annual report, what a beautiful document that was, just the color pages, not the financial stuff, the public, they don't know how to read those. I was the treasurer for an organization for many years, and when my account, our accountant gave us that stuff, I looked it over and thought, oh, my God, I hope he didn't make a mistake because it's my name on the line. It didn't make any sense to me. The public doesn't need to really see that unless they really are curious. But to have that water manual, what the water work plan, it explains things. I went on that tour, that wonderful tour that Maureen Phillips pulled together. I'm sure other staff people worked on it, too, but she's the one that I'm giving the credit to because. to because, um, I contacted her later and said, you know, these things ought to be allowed to the, the public if they could just come out here, and she sent me back a whole page about why that wouldn't work. However, I think since one of the performance measurements, oh, and I found this wonderful book at the library, they were just giving it away, uh, performance appraisal, um, that one of the things is they're supposed to be under the governance goal number five in your strategic plan, one of the performance measurements was that the, um, city would have eight workshops a year that would be made available to the public. I would suggest that we have a workshop on how the s- water system works, because people have this foremost in their minds and not real information. And I don't know if the data and the infra, the, um, figures and things, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know if that's accurate, but I thought that the descriptions and how it works, the, how the system works, where the water comes from, where it goes, what's done in between, I think that's very valuable information, and to share that with the public, you know, not everybody needs to have it. It's not like the Explore Historic Titusville, we want everybody to have that booklet, but interested people should have access to these hard copies.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Stan Johnston.
Uh, Stan Johnston, I'm talking to you as a professional engineer, and I don't know a whole lot about this, but, but I've seen some things that are going on that are, are of great concern, and I've looked at, briefly at this, uh, at this work plan, and I'm disappointed in some things. And one of the things is, the city of Titusville has, has notoriously overcompumped wells and destroyed wells, costing lots and lots of money. They, uh, and, and the city, uh, you can even look at their records, they've done it. And we have an area of critical concerns throughout the city of Titusville, area of critical concerns that were established in nineteen eighty-six. They're obsolete and outdated. City does not update them. They're absolute nonsense. And, and you've got, uh, the well field over there at Indian IRC, uh, south of State Road fifty, and, uh, I don't know how many years it's, it just hadn't been functioning, or functioning very little, little to none, and, uh, we still have it on as, as, uh, it doesn't, doesn't seem like we're truthful about that, as far as I know. Uh, so, uh, we've got a number of, of, of problems, and we had water towers removed, like the one at South Street. I was, every, council was told, uh, city's got calculations that it justifies removal of it. So I contact Water Resources and they don't have the calculations. This is a big deal, and you guys need to do something about what's going on in Water Resources. And we got a public works director now who's instead of Andrew, when I talked to, called Andrew Janser, he answered the phone, when I said my name, he hung up on me, and he's your acting director of Water Resources. We got problems, and you just need to stop ignoring the problems and take care of them. I'm, I'm just unbelievable. The thirteen point five million dollars, it started out ten million, now it's thirteen, it's over thirteen point five, that's just for getting this, this update of reclaimed water. Now, how, the thing is, is when you adopted, it was consent agenda item, you believe it? Consent agenda item. Said ten million, now it's up to thirteen and a half million. Uh, thirteen and a half million, that was about a year ago. So this thing is, is what is the city going to cost, extra money is it going to cost? Nobody gives us, nobody gives the idea. PFAS, city boiled water alerts, citywide boiled water alerts, we still don't have a, uh, answer. Mr. Stofford said he was going to report to you how much it's going to cost so he won't have to have any more boiled water alerts. He never did. What in the world are you guys doing? Are you guys gonna wake up or what? City wi- citywide boiled water alerts, it costs, one, one restaurant, it costs over thirty thousand dollars. Are you, are you completely nuts? I want to see some common sense here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No other cards?
Yes.
Uh, council?
Move to approve and adopt the twenty twenty-three water supply facilities work plan.
Second.
I have a motion by member Nelson, a second by member Cole, roll call, vote.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes. Passes unanimously, city manager.
Onto item twelve E, which is ad valorem tax abatement for tax year twenty twenty-two for Bricks Brewery LLC. In ordinance number twenty-seven two fifteen, granted an ad valorem tax abatement of a hundred percent for the duration of eight years to Bricks Project Brewery LLC. Um, they have met the requirements for approval this year, so staff is recommending that you approve the economic development ad valorem tax exception for the continuace, continuation of ordinance number twenty-seven two fifteen for tax year twenty twenty-two for Bricks Project Brewery LLC at a hundred percent.
Okay. And staff has nothing on that, right? Okay, I didn't think so, since you said, and I thought I'd ask him. Uh, council, anything? Uh, I see none, card?
I have no cards.
Well. Uh, council?
Mr. Mayor, I recommend approval of the economic development ad valorem tax exemption and continu-
Is it on?
Oh, yeah, okay. I was just saying. Mr. Mayor, I recommend approval of the economic development ad valorem tax exemption and continuation of ordinance number twenty-seven dash two zero one five for tax year twenty-two, twenty twenty-two for the Bricks Projects Brewery LLC at a hundred percent.
Second.
I have a motion by vice mayor, a second by member Nelson, roll call, vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, city manager.
Onto twelve F, which is ad valorem tax abatement for tax year twenty twenty-two for Eckler Industries. Ordinance number eighteen, two thousand thirteen, granted an ad valorem tax abatement of ninety percent for the duration of nine years to Eckler Industries Incorporated. Staff is, uh, analysis that they have met the requirements for tax year twenty twenty-two, staff recommends you to approve the economic development ad valorem tax exemption and continuation of ordinance number eighteen, two thousand thirteen for tax year twenty twenty-two for Eckler Industries Incorporated at ninety percent.
Counsel, anything on that? I see none, call the card.
No cards.
Uh, council?
Move to approve the economic development ad valorem tax exemption and continuation of ordinance number eighteen, twenty thirteen for tax year twenty twenty-two for Eckler Industries at ninety percent.
Second.
I have a motion by member Nelson, a second by member Cole, roll call, vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, city manager.
Onto twelve G, which is the ad valorem tax abatement for tw- tax year twenty twenty-two to Paragon Plastics. Ordinance number twenty-three, two thousand fifteen, granted an ad valorem tax abatement of sixty percent for the duration of six years to Paragon Plastics. Um, they have met the requirements for the tax abatement in tax year twenty twenty-two. Staff recommends that you approve the economic development tax, the ta- ad valorem tax exemption, uh, and continuation of ordinance number twenty-three, two thousand fifteen for tax year twenty twenty-two for Paragon Plastics at sixty percent.
Counsel? I see nothing. Uh, call the card?
No cards.
Three, in a row, never seen that. Uh, council, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, you're there.
Move to approve the ad valorem tax abatement for your tax year twenty twenty-two for Paragon Plastics.
Second.
I have a motion from member Nelson, a second from member Cole, roll call, vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. City manager?
Onto petitions and requests from the public president on non-agend items.
I think we've, don't have anybody left that can do that. No, okay, we don't have anybody, so we move on to mayor's report.
Mayor and council report, yes, sir.
I'm not gonna, uh, beat at that horse, I did talk to, actually I talked to Stan about it earlier today, um, I'd love to get it out there, I think it's on our website, uh, but I understand there was a online, um, seminar, Indian River Lagoon seminar that was put on by, um, uh, Save Our Lagoon. What's that, the lady's name who heads that up?
Virginia Barker.
Virginia Barker, and, uh, word I got, um, actually I think I got it from Mr. Myjack when we met last week, that she really raved on Titusville's efforts, and you pointed out, Ms. Shifalo, how there's people out there that don't really know how hard we're working, and I really just feel like, and you really can't see this, I get it, but on here, it basically, uh, and I know that member Cole talked about it, but I would just want to kind of go slow on this and say, uh, project delivery partnerships, and she raved on us when, and you were here, actually, when we went out to the Osprey plant, when my knees were hurting so bad. It's true, she noticed it. But anyway, um, I didn't know this until I saw it, to be very honest with you, and when I saw it, and she really raved on us how well we're doing, and, uh, I'm not going to diss any of the other cities, but I will tell you that, um, I just read the numbers, we have eleven projects completed. The closest to us is the Brevard Zoo at ten, which you would think they'd be doing pretty good with that. Cocoa Beach is six, you'd think they'd be pretty good. Marine Resource Council, they're five. And then when you get into the cities, uh, Melbourne is four projects completed, city of Cocoa is three, Indian Harbor Beach is two, Palm Bay is two, West Melbourne is two, Cape Canaveral is one, India Atlantic is one, uh, Merritt Island Redevelopment Agency, I'm not sure what that is, they're one, Private Mobile Home Park, not sure what that is, but they're one, Rockledge and Satellite are both one. There are twenty-four projects completed in our county, and we account for almost half of those. So my, my hat is off to those responsible for moving us ahead of the curve, staff, city manager, whoever, all, I, I should have the names, but I will tell you that, uh, as far as council, we are very supportive of anything that comes along that will benefit our Indian River Lagoon. I got a, uh, report yesterday, um, at League of Cities from MRC that, uh, showing a great improvement in water quality. Um, I don't understand it all, but the goal is to get to eighty. Not sure what eighty means, but we're trying to get to eighty, and we're almost there, but we still don't have the seagrass growing, and, and I can't, they're working on that, I don't have the answer to that. That is, gotta get fixed, but I can tell you that their, uh, MRC presented yesterday and did speak about, uh, congratulated Oliver Bard County because they feel like we're leading the state in our efforts. So there's some good news out there, we're working hard, but we got a long way to go, right, and quite honestly, a lot of years to go. Um, so we can't just say, okay, we got eleven, we're ahead of everybody else, we're done. And I know we're not, I know we're not doing that, but I just wanted to say that I understand for anybody out there watching, say, oh, so what? Well, what I'm saying is, when you're in first place, you're in first place, and we're working, we're doing something. But there's a lot of work to be done, and, uh, that needs to be said. Um, it was my honor to meet with, uh, vice chair of the TEC, uh, Mr. Myjack, and then I met with Laura Lee, the chair, back-to-back days, and I can tell you, we're all looking to get the same things done. We're, we're, we really are, and, um, the one-on-ones are just such a blessing, and I think you just get so much more done when you take all the emotion out, say, what do we gotta do? And we, I agree, we got a long way to go, and they agree, and they're very pleased that we are ahead of the curve, we're ahead of everybody in this county with completed projects, that's a big deal, not just projects started, not just projects thought about, projects completed. And that makes me very happy and very proud, but it doesn't make me satisfied. We have a long way to go, and I, I am pleased that I got to meet with the TEC members I met with, and, uh, we're gonna keep on going and getting it done. Um, with that said, I move on to member Nelson.
Boy, okay, building on that, uh, as you guys know, I've been looking at wetlands, and how can we preserve wetlands? Do we need to preserve? And talking to a number of people, and I started with Dr. Jacoby and said, is this a good idea? Is this something that maybe we should look at? And his answer was yes. So, talked to Woody Rice, um, talked to Robin Fisher, talked to Cole Oliver, and basically said, how can we do this? And so this was their suggestion to me, uh, wetland mitigation bank, credit is worth a hundred and twenty thousand to a hundred and sixty thousand. And their suggestion to me was that we look at creating a mitigation bank, we sell those credits, and then we turn around and start preserving the wetlands. So, Saint John's Water Management, you, you were there when we went out to the sewer treatment plant. Um, they asked to talk to me, so I don't know what they can do or not do, um, but they would like to have a meeting with us, uh, with staff Friday for two hours.
Be one-on-one, because they can't meet with us all at once.
No, it would be with staff, talking about potentially what, what we can do. Um, I understand Virginia Barker told me they had some money, um, for wetlands, I'm sure they're not going to buy wetlands for us, but, uh, Cole Oliver called me earlier this week and said, our suggestion would be that we take some of the little property we have, turn it into a mitigation bank, sell that, those credits, and then turn around and start buying wetlands. Right now, you know, we really can't, uh, go in and destroy large wetlands, but what happens twenty years from now? When there's no, no land left? Um, and there's that pressure to build, build, build. My thought is, if the property is ours, then too bad, it's off the market. Um, we also went over to, and I don't know if this is possible, these are things to explore, went over to the Orlando Wetlands, and I don't know if you guys have seen it, but it is absolutely beautiful, and it is a tourist attraction.
I have not.
In and of itself. People were all over the place, four thousand, five thousand dollar cameras, um, a lot of alligators, um, but it was, it's an attraction.
That's why I hadn't been there.
Yeah. So I think I need approval from you guys to sit down and talk to Saint John's Water Management.
No, maybe you need approval to use staff for greater than two hours.
Yes. So that's what I'm asking for.
So what staff are you using, and how will that work?
Uh, Sandy Roder, because if we, if this is feasible, if this is something we can do, she would be the person that would be responsible for coming up with the plan.
Five staff, two staff for two hours?
One, one staff for two hours.
Is there a, a limit on what council can use, a staff person?
Yes, there anything greater than two hours that requires your approval? That's why we do advisabilities for staff to do research and, and all that, that, and in fact is why we bring advisability to you, is because we will be using a lot of staff time to accomplish that task.
Yes.
I think what, um, member Nelson is asking for is to, for staff to participate with her in a meeting with Saint John's for greater than two hours.
And I'm certainly not opposed, because, uh, in a lot of ways, I, I say it a lot, I'm not the expert, and I rely on staff, and sometimes my TEC and meetings with, uh, Laura Lee, et cetera, but in this case, and I really feel like we all know how burdened staff is right now, we've seen the board.
Yeah.
But I also think that if we can just kind of do this two hour, or however that may work out, and be as efficient as you can, I think the expertise there would be very helpful for you to get the answers you're looking for, so I would be for it. Um, member Stokel?
Yeah, I agree, um, it seems very interesting, I'd want to know more about it, I don't know.
Having an expert.
Yeah, exactly, like, how it would all play out and where the credits come from, and that kind of thing, I, I'd like to know more.
So I think what we need to do is just, help me word what we need to do here, not, are, are more than two hours, what are we saying?
Anything greater than two hours you'll just need approval, I, I believe your meeting is a one-on-one meeting.
Yeah.
It might not even be longer than two hours.
Yeah, it may not be, but we're just-
But if it does go over two hours, um, we need to have a motion to approve that.
Yeah.
So, member Stokel?
Yep, move to approve, um, Sandy to meet with Jolynn and Saint John's Water Management, whichever experts, staff, um, just to get some better direction and advice moving forward.
But we have to add the, we- But we have to add the, we approve if it exceeds two hours?
No, sir, that's fine.
Okay, then we're good right there?
That's good.
Just make sure we're all on the same page with the direction of what we're looking for.
She just basically said approve for her to meet with her. We didn't say anything about more than two hours.
The reason why we're doing that, sir, is to get the, council has to approve greater than two hours.
Because we could have a council member that's just requesting staff time, like every day, and.
No, I get that. I'll go with that.
Yeah.
I didn't hear the part about where we have to approve it if they exceed two hours, because we're just approving it.
Yeah.
Not any hours.
Yeah.
So go ahead. I'm, I'm good with however you say it, as long as it works. All right, I got a motion from member Stokel.
I should.
I got a second from vice mayor. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
Yeah, we have a card.
Okay, okay. Well, I was still getting through my vote. Got me caught in the middle. Yeah, go ahead. I guess, right? Got a card?
St. John's.
Go ahead.
Yes.
All right, I already took the vote. We have the, or do you want me to do it again?
I, I gotta say, thank you, guys. I'm very excited about this idea.
I, I like the, and we haven't used staff a lot. I really purposely sometimes don't, but sometimes if you don't have a reason to, you don't bother them.
No, no.
This is really a perfect way to use them.
And I will tell you, so far.
And I think they'll love it.
Everybody has said, this is a good idea. So, and that.
Well, you've got the right people you're talking to right now, too. St. John's.
Yeah.
You know, and Sandy will be, I think she'll love this opportunity, so let's see what happens.
Second thing I do wanna ask.
This is your fourth thing, but go ahead.
Is that my fourth? I'm sorry. P. Fos. Scott, can we have an update?
Sure. The regulatory standards from the federal government, we have those now. We have what the standards are and where we're to test. And what the federal government is in right now is the phase where you can comment nationwide. So because we, we've already funded it, we'd like to get ahead of the power curve, because everybody's gonna be going to the same contractors for the testing. So while everybody else is in the comment period, we'd like to go ahead and begin testing, which we're going to do. And if there's any adjustments to the testing as a result, or the comment periods, we'll adjust to that.
Do we know how long it will take to get the results back?
The testing period is a year.
To get the test results back?
The testing period is a year.
Okay, okay.
And once again, it looks like we're getting ahead of the curve by getting, not waiting. All right, member Cole? Nothing? Okay.
No, I didn't. No, no. You know better than that. We had a presentation at our Parish Medical Center Board last Monday from the Brevard Zoo. Brevard Zoo, in conjunction with Parish Medical Center, are putting out pods in the Indian River Lagoon to grow seagrass.
Okay, now we're cooking.
So Parish in conjunction with the zoo. Now, the young lady that gave the presentation, I spoke to her after the presentation to see, and she's more than willing to come and talk to us about it if we so desire. So I guess I'm asking, huh?
That'd be awesome.
So do I need to make a motion for this?
Sure. What you're asking for is to add a presentation by whatever organization.
The Brevard Zoo, yes.
And that would be it, it's your next available presentation.
Next available presentation. I'd love to see that.
Okay. So I would like to make that motion.
Can you make that motion?
Can I make that motion? Okay.
Okay, second.
I would, okay. The motion was for, to get someone, get the young lady that I have her card from the Brevard Zoo to come and explain exactly what they're doing with Parish Medical Center with the pods for seagrass.
We're gonna have a card, too, if you're making a motion. We're gonna have a card if you're making a motion.
Okay.
You gotta make a motion, so we'll have to take the card.
I need to do a card?
No, 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 no. Just make the motion, we'll go from there.
I made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion?
I made the motion, okay.
I, I have a motion from member Cole, a second from member Nelson. Call the card.
And just to clarify, you would like that, it's your next available presentation?
Yes, please. Which would be one of the 5:30 meetings, right?
Right, sir, right.
Okay, good.
We're pushing for seagrass, Dan.
He's gonna say yes.
Maybe.
Okay. Thank you for this opportunity to, to speak, as you know, freedom of speech. And I do approve of this motion. Thank you, Mr. Cole. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Right, rest assured, I know about that.
Yeah, and the other thing is that I have a meeting tomorrow with Laura Lee.
We need a vote on the first motion.
Yeah, you're going right through us. I thought maybe you were adding something. All right, the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries.
So I was saying, tomorrow I'm meeting with Laura Lee Thompson and Maureen Rup for lunch tomorrow to discuss things with the TEC.
Absolutely. I think where there's a, a good communication going on, like I said, I, I got to meet with the chair and the vice chair, was really blessed to do so. And I think the more we talk, the more we realize we're on the same page.
Yes.
You good? You better be. Member Stokel?
Okay, just a few updates regarding some legislation. So I was in Tallahassee past week. I feel like all my days are starting to blur together. But this session was actually kind of, it's still going on, but it's a little bit weirder than what I'm used to. I feel like if you guys are watching the news, there's a lot going on in Tallahassee. So not too much of an emphasis on local government, but there still are some things, and I feel like there's still almost like an attack on it, and them wanting to control almost everything we're doing. So there's some good and some not-so-good. I feel like that's coming. The sovereign immunity, I feel like, is not going to pass. I think we'll be good on the utilities as well as the solid waste management, which were some things that they were trying to open it up essentially for private businesses to be able to come in for commercial areas, which I think would have created a bunch of issues for us specifically with, because we do our own solid waste. One of the things that I feel like it's still kind of on the table, that we were able to talk to all of our reps and senators, and even some outside of our area about, were the residential building permits. They were trying to make it that we had to give very quick turnaround times for anybody that's applying for a permit, essentially three days, which.
That's not three workdays, that's three days.
Calendar days, sorry. Thank you, yes, yes. And I think that some of them, as we were talking, they're like, are you sure that's correct? And so I think they're getting a lot of push from developers and stories that they're hearing, where they're not actually hearing both sides, which is why I'm so appreciative of the Florida League of Cities and how they're structured and organized to advocate and educate on a lot of these things. One of the reps that we visited showed us a binder about this thick and said, this is all my reading just for today. So it's really important when we build those relationships here locally and then up in Tallahassee, just to remind them of what this actually means for us when we're trying to implement things. So hopefully that either dies or gets amended, but that was one that was still on the table. Financial disclosure was heard yesterday. I did not see what happened with it, but it looks like, from our discussion up there, they were saying that it looks like it's probably going through where we would have to file Form 6. So if you haven't yet, you can go ahead and just look it up online. The House reps have to do that now, so they're thinking that we have to do it as well. It's a lot more intrusive as to what you have to fill out when you want to run for office about your finances.
Form 6, if I could add to that.
Oh, it's much more intrusive.
Oh, much more.
Much more intrusive.
A Form 6 creates all your assets, all your liabilities, and all your income streams, and they have to be described in, in great detail to determine your net worth, and then that's, it's a public record at that point.
It's because we make so much money doing this.
Yeah, it's, and there was some, definitely some pushback, I think, on us, especially like when we have cities, we don't make that much, and I think sometimes it can already be a struggle to get qualified people to run for office, and then you're now adding another barrier. But their mindset is, we're doing it, you guys should do it, too.
Let me just say, and I said this before, probably shouldn't say it here, but I'm going to anyway, I'd still like to meet with our representative. I think that that'll be a priority for any, and I'll say it when I do get to meet with them. It's just me. How have you not met with the mayor, especially when you don't live here?
Yeah.
Especially when you're from Volusia County. And we'll just put it on the table. That's a problem.
I, I think it will happen, just because they have, they're in session right now in committee weeks.
Well, it would have helped if it happened before session. That's just me.
Yeah.
I just call it like I see it. That being said, with all the things I heard yesterday, and all the angst I heard from, thankfully from League of Cities. They're not happy with any of this stuff. I, I, I feel like it's getting tougher and tougher to be a local elected official.
Yes, I would agree with you.
And as time goes on, we're going to have less and less say on development, on wetlands preservation. They're, they're making a lot of calls and.
Yep. And as these things are coming through, and I know we've talked about in our one-on-one, just as these things come through, and just us, especially like me and some of us that got elected at the same time, there's just, roles have changed so drastically, and so we've been accustomed to doing certain things and making.
Different world.
Motion certain ways, and like just being better educated on how to make that motion and what it has to entail now, just as they're, they really are trying to tie our hands, essentially. And so I feel like that's been my biggest push, is just to get better educated with the comp plan and our code, to make sure, okay, if they're saying we can't do this, this, and this, but we can do this, like how, how can I be better informed with it? So that's something, as these things are getting pushed through, and I really feel like they're just not clearly, in my opinion, informed really on what they're doing when they're passing some of this stuff and what it means. But that's neither here nor there. I will keep you guys posted as some of those things, if, if they should come to pass. Yesterday was also our Space Coast League of Cities meeting. Mayor, vice mayor were there. Good Titusville representation. One of the cool things that I, I know we, some of us got that are in the board, they have now a new handbook. They are trying to put this online, so if you guys want to know more about the Space Coast League of Cities, it's very, very helpful. This has been a work in progress, so I was happy to see that, that came to pass. As well, I wanted to keep you guys posted that they are going to be giving out scholarships. So anybody that you know that might be interested in going to Eastern Florida, that's in the field, or surrounding, public administration, anything in that area, they're going to have money and sponsors to give out scholarships. So those applications, we'll be getting them. I think the clerk will be getting them soon. They'll be due at the beginning of June. And lastly, the Florida League of Cities has come up with a lot of resources to help with advocacy, and it was really cool, I've talked about that smoking bill for a while, but they put together a really nice video with Mark Ryan and myself.
Member Stokel's in the video.
Yeah, and it was, it was really cool to see that, because they did come out to the city of Titusville. We did some filming over at Sandpoint, and they pieced it together. I think they filmed Mark, because he's in Tallahassee now, and just putting together the story of the, the process of getting that bill through that, to, to the finish line, essentially. So it was really cool, because I, I worked really hard on that bill to see kind of that story being told. Just, it makes me want to continue on, even though I get frustrated. So that is my update.
I have one more question. I asked it last time. I didn't hear it at League of Cities review last night.